Our gracious God, we thank you for this day and for the opportunity to gather in service to our community. We ask for wisdom and clarity for the decisions that will be made here. May each commissioner be guided by integrity, fairness, and a commitment to the well-being of all residents. Help us to listen with respect, speak with compassion, and act with justice. May unity be our strength and the common good our goal. We are grateful for those who serve, our leaders, first responders, city employees, and volunteers. May peace and progress guide our efforts. In your name we ask. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, I'll call the August 18th, 2025 meeting of the Burley County Commission to Order. First is roll call of members, please.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Here.
Commissioner Monson.
Here.
Commissioner Bakken.
Here.
Commissioner Schwab.
Here.
Chairman Bitner.
Here. Next is approval of the agenda. Anybody have anything they want to add or subtract? I'm going to add a little bit of a conversation under other business concerning sales tax, just for information purposes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Monson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Here.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes. Motion carries. Next is consideration of August 4th, 2025, meeting minutes and bills. Commissioners?
I reviewed the bills and they are in good standing, so I would move to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the bills. Do you include the meeting minutes?
If anybody else doesn't have any concerns over the minutes, then yes, I would include that.
Is the second okay with having that?
Yes, second's okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Monson.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public comment. Obviously, it's restricted to Burley County residents and landowners. There's some time restrictions if we want to exercise them, but otherwise, if somebody has something that's not on the agenda that you want to bring to the county commission's attention, please approach Prodiom and give your name.
I'm Lydia Guessley, and I called this morning about getting on the agenda. As I said, my name is Lydia Guessley, and I need to provide public notice to Burley County. This is in accordance with the USCS Rules of Civil Procedure, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution of the United States has an overarching requirement that every state must follow. I don't think anyone here would deny that. The states cannot enact their own alternative legislation substituted for the guarantees of the Constitution of the United States. That would mean that the state laws are more powerful than the Constitution. Clause 1 of Amendment 5 of the United States Constitution says, "No person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless a presentment or grand jury." However, the state of North Dakota has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits the prosecuting attorney or police officer to charge by information, not by indictment. This is unconstitutional. An emollient violation is when you pay public officials to break the law. The Constitution has two areas to enforce this. One is Article 1, Section 10, where it says, "No state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of contracts." Police officers, prosecutors, judges are all under contract, a contract to perform that's based upon the oath or affirmation that they took. The contract perimeters are defined within the Constitution of the United States. When the state enacts laws that direct their agents to disobey the law, the Constitution of the United States, that would be a violation of Article 1, Section 10. Now, the Fourteenth Amendment is the other place that you will find the reinforcement of this issue, and that's where it says that no state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the United States citizens. The privileges and immunities of the United States citizens are, at a minimum, those enumerated within the Bill of Rights, the first 10 amendments. They cannot be impaired. Thus, the state of North Dakota has enacted a law in its inferior constitution that is permitting public officials and law enforcement, whom you pay, to violate the Constitution of the United States. As a result, there is an inordinate amount of people currently imprisoned in the state of North Dakota illegally and unconstitutionally. Tonawha Downeys is litigating this issue in the United States Supreme Court, and I'm here to notify you that if you continue to pay the public officers to break the law, there can be criminal sanctions that would come from that. We don't want to go down that path, but officials must be made aware that paying people to disobey the law is an emollient violation. It is illegal. It is unconstitutional. I'm asking you, honorable people, to please look at Clause 1, Amendment 5, and confirm what I'm saying to be true, and then direct your public officials to act in a lawful, constitutional manner, consistent with the obligations that are codified in the Constitution of the United States of America. I have a notice that I would like to put on the record. Thank you very much, and God bless.
I'll take that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, commissioners. First off, I want to say I appreciate the joint meeting you guys had about the ETA. There was some good discussion throughout the whole meeting, so I appreciate that. The reason I'm here tonight is I don't know how many of you guys have heard about the changes with Bismarck Public Schools and the busing. I know some of you are looking at me like, how's that our problem? The reason I feel it's your problem, and I would like the county to discuss this, is because when we start having issues with traffic backing up, kids walking in the roads, who responds to that? Our Burley County Sheriff is going to be responding to that. It's not going to be the city police, you know, because it's out in the ETA. Especially in my neighborhood, we don't have sidewalks, we don't have streetlights. Now we have kids that are going to be congregating in the road, on the road, where our parents are going to pick their children up at the congregation point. We don't have places to pull off, so now we're going to have traffic backing up. The next school board meeting is September 8th. I would ask this commission to have some discussion about it and to possibly have somebody from our sheriff's department come talk about public safety with that, because ultimately, if this goes astray, we're going to be tying up officers during those peak hours. I had a great discussion with our county highway department about the traffic flow. I was actually surprised at how quickly he could produce that information. Found out that north side of Burnt Creek Loop has around 1,450 vehicles a day, south side has about 1,650 vehicles a day. Those peak hours of traffic coincide with the time that the bus arrives and drops kids off. So now we're going to have peak flow of traffic, and we're also going to have, like I said, kids neander in the streets, more vehicles, more commotion. That just sounds disastrous. So I would ask this commission and the sheriff's department to have some discussion about it and see if we maybe can't, you know, can't see how that's going to affect the outlying area in Burley County. So, appreciate it.
Thank you.
What's his name?
Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and move on to the consent agenda. We got abatement, second access permit, and a budget amendment. Anybody want to pull anything off for further discussion? Or if not? Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Monson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes. Motion carries. Vision Zero Regional Outreach Coordinator Teresa Tom. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to take a second to get set up here.
Are these two separate things, Teresa?
Um, they are...
Three things?
It's like four.
Oh, four, sorry.
So I set them all up. So you see how it's...
Take one?
Take a whole section.
Okay. Okay. And then?
Yeah, sorry, that's...
All right. Got to have instructions for a guy like me?
We didn't get ours. We didn't get... There's some left. We didn't get it.
Oh. Somebody's got more than...
I was short. I only took the top one.
Okay. I think I got a...
Does everyone have their copies?
We'll just have to...
We'll figure it out.
Okay. Apologize for the confusion.
You just talk about which one you're on, and if we have extras, then we'll share them.
Okay, sounds good. So my name is Teresa Tome. I am the Vision Zero Coordinator for the southwest region of North Dakota, and I wanted to give you all an update on Vision Zero and what we've been up to. So Vision Zero's goal is to eliminate fatalities and serious injuries caused by motor vehicle This is our team currently. We added a Jamestown Coordinator and a Dickinson Coordinator in the past year, so our team has grown exponentially. So, yeah, we added Kelly just a month ago in the Dickinson region. About 40,000 lives are lost every year in America, and then in North Dakota alone, 100 people die every year. That's 100 families, 100 schools, 100 communities that are impacted by car crash fatalities. These are our numbers in North Dakota in the past 10 years. At the end, in 2014, that was near the end of the oil boom, so you can see that we've tapered off, and in 2022, that was the first year in 20 years we were under 100 fatalities in North Dakota. So Vision Zero is working, and we're getting down to our goal. And then broken down by gender, in 2023, 65% of our fatalities are male, and only 35% were female. And then we also have the breakdown by month. So our summer months continued to be our highest fatalities, and in February, that is most often our least fatality month. So that's the safest month to be driving around. Okay, so now to the packet part that I gave you. So these numbers are from 2019 to 2024. They're the past five years. So we had 2,392 injury crashes in Burley County. Of those crashes, 90% were in the city. And then from ages 15 to 19, there were 634 crashes. Ages 20 to 25, there were 620 crashes, and then ages 65-plus was 613 crashes. So I broke that down. You can see the numbers all listed out, the ages, and I just added them all up and divided that. So for our fatalities, we had 33 fatalities in the past five years in Burley County. 60% were urban, 40% were rural. Wear helmets were applied, only 33% were not using their helmet at the time of the crash. So that's like motorcycles or off-highway vehicles. And then wear seat belts applied, 27% of the fatalities in Burley County were ejected. Again, the ages involved in these fatalities, 15 to 19, had five fatalities. That's our highest age group of fatalities. Ages 20 to 25 had three fatalities, and ages 65-plus had 13 fatalities. So you can see that the ages 15 to 25 had, by far, our most injury crashes. They accounted for our younger drivers, but our ages 65-plus drivers accounted for more of the fatalities. Any questions on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
That only totals 21 of the other fatalities.
So the other fatalities are the other ages, and you can see it if you had your... If you had the packet, it would have the other ages. So from 35 to 64, or excuse me, from 26 to 64, those fatalities aren't accounted for because they were a smaller number. I'm highlighting the numbers that had the highest fatalities. Does that make sense? And then I also included the urban high-crash locations and the rural high-crash locations. So in Burley County, we had the number two in the entire state was State Street and 43rd here in Bismarck, had 498 crashes. And then number three was State Street and Calgary Avenue, 466 crashes and one fatality. And then number seven was Main Avenue and Seventh Street with 367 crashes and one fatality. And then for rural high-crash locations, I know this isn't in Burley County, but I thought I'd mention it, is Highway 83 and 23. That intersection is ranked number one in rural high-crash locations. It had 596 crashes and four fatalities. And all of these crashes were due to drivers in North Dakota on ND23 failing to yield. And you can see on the packet, DOT has plans for certain crash locations. They have a plan for this one. And then number 20 for high-crash locations was North Dakota 1804 and Burnt Creek Loop, which I think was mentioned already, with 126 crashes. All of them were angle crashes, and most were involving an eastbound vehicle. Any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Woodcox.
Burley County has several roundabouts. Have you seen any... They're relatively new. Have you seen any fatal accidents on any of those, do you know?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Roundabouts can decrease the... They might increase crashes, but they decrease the fatal crashes. So...
And how about Highway 83, State Street, Bismarck has done, or the DOT, I suppose, revamped that whole highway almost for a mile and a half or so. Has that seen a reduction? They said they were going to reduce the number of accidents. Has that happened?
It is too early to tell, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have the answer for that, unfortunately. I can see and ask, but this is all the data I have for right now.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Mr. Bakken.
So with the roundabouts, a lot of it is just because of the decreased speeds, limiting the fatalities, correct?
Right. Yes.
I think it's more than just the decreased speed. I think it's the angle of possible impacts.
No more keybone crashes.
Right. It's more of like a wishbone type of...
Right. Okay. Anything else on this slide? Okay. So now we're going to move into community involvement. This shouldn't take too much time. We were at the Kids Safety Day at the Capitol this past July. We had, I think, over 800 kids come to Kids Safety Day. I had a sticker poll with questions asking what the most important thing to do is when you get into the car, and I had sit in the back, stay calm and quiet, ask the driver for a snack every 30 seconds, or buckle your seatbelt. And the majority of them said buckle your seatbelt. There were a couple kids that said ask the driver for a snack every 30 seconds, so...
Wayne?
I hand them off regularly.
Okay, and then on July 31st, we had our DUI All-Star event with the Bismarck clerks. We recognized officers that helped get impaired drivers off of our roadways. So you can see in the center picture, that's Deputy Jade Johnson. Deputy Jade Johnson shaking Robin's hand and receiving a bat and a keychain and recognizing him for his hard work getting the impaired drivers off of our roadways. So we recognized officers, law enforcement from North Dakota Highway Patrol, the Bismarck Police Department, Burley County Sheriff's Department, Morton County Sheriff's Department, Mandan Police Department, and Lincoln Police. I think that's all of them. But yeah, this was a great event to take part in just because we were actually recognizing officers in front of the regular, everyday people and letting them know that we have officers that are doing the hard work out there, and they appreciate... The officers appreciated it, too, which was cool to see. Okay, and then we're doing some work in tribal schools as well. We had the party with police at United Tribes Technical College. You can see that the law enforcement and the people with United Tribes are doing a tug-of-war with each other. There was a bunch of fun games at this party with the police, and it was a great way for the tribe to interact with law enforcement. And then Standing Rock is one of our Vision Zero schools, so I taught the Vision Zero Student Leaders Seatbelt Safety Curriculum, and then they went and presented in front of their kindergarten through fifth-grade peers about seatbelt safety. So I thought that might be more impactful than just me presenting to the students. Like, them teaching each other is probably going to go a lot farther. Okay, and that's all I have. Thank you so much, Burley County, for housing this position. I really appreciate all of the support you've given me and Vision Zero.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate the update.
Yes. Any other questions before I head out?
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Bakken.
So what's the next steps as far as where the program goes from here? You guys have done a lot of great groundwork. Where do you see this going over the next couple of years?
It's always growing and developing. I think with adding two more coordinators, we're hoping to cover more ground across schools and across communities. Like, we've gotten into schools, we've done that, and I think we're hoping to expand more in the community now, whether that's working with different businesses or partnering with bigger corporations, bigger companies. It's just getting those right contacts.
So current messaging is working, just...
Yes.
Now you're just looking at expanding that message out further.
Right. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
Okay, we're on item number eight, County Engineer Hall. We got a developer waiver request, township flex fund grants, and county flex fund grants. Welcome, Marcus.
Good evening, commissioners. First item I have on the agenda is the developers' waivers request. Under our current policy, under pavement policy, all internal roads of a subdivision is presented to the county or either the cities, Lincoln or Bismarck, required to have their internal roads paved. We've gotten a request from LGO Trust in Burnt Creek Township, and there's a map included in your packet, the location of that particular proposed subdivision. They're creating a two-lot subdivision, and they're requesting a waiver of our pavement policy. Under our current policy, they'd be required to pave about .3 miles. It'd be a township mile or subdivision roadway going in there. Under the waiver process that we have developed, this would allow the county board to let the plat move forward through the approval process, but does not preclude the county or township from requesting that the individuals that live in that particular plat participate with any paving in the future that we may happen to do in that area. So there is a proposed resolution in your packet. I'd recommend approval, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? Move to approve? Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Monson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes. Motion carries.
The next item I have on the agenda is approval of support for township flex fund grants. The 2025 legislative session set a new program basically for township flex funds. Actually, the program did exist, they just put additional monies and stuff to that particular program. As part of the application process, they were requiring that these townships get approval from the county, that you support the project basically that they're putting forward. We are a little concerned with the timing of the application, when it's due and stuff like that, and how everybody puts their application in at the last minute, and we won't be able to get it to the county board in time. That we would prefer to just do a blanket support of all township projects that they present for this flex funds. I can't imagine any township putting forward any particular grant that we wouldn't support at the end of the day anyway. So what we're asking for is just a blanket support. There's a proposed resolution in your packet. Under this particular program, they have a standard letter decided by the auditor. I've talked to the auditor. What we will do, if we get a grant from a township, we'll put the letter together, send it over to the auditor, have him sign it, and return it included, part of the package. So I'd recommend approval, but I'd take any questions.
Commissioner Bakken.
So Marcus, these flex fund grants, are they just for townships that we have an MOU with, or is it open for all the townships in Burley County?
They're open to all the townships, organized and unorganized, within Burley County.
Okay. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion? Mr. Chair. Commissioner Monson.
Marcus, so picked the first project at 1.75 million. What's our cost share versus what is the possible grant?
Commissioners, that's the next board letter. This one's just dealing with the township.
Okay.
Then I'll deal with the county ones right after that.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. Right. Motion is second to approve on that township flex fund grant. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Monson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes. Motion carries.
The next one, you stole my thunder already, is the county flex fund grants that we're going to be talking about. And I just want to take a brief... This is a little background information. I presented this sheet of paper to you to just give you an idea. Legislative session at the very last minute, a lot of things were going on with county funding and stuff. So this kind of explains what we got, what we didn't get, what we were expecting kind of thing, going back and forth. As you can see, this, I'll just go down it real quick. Legacy funds, we were anticipating $2 million. We talked about this last year during the budget process and stuff. We did not get that money. So bad for the highway department, but good for the residents of Burley County because they're taking that money, and that's going to go to a lot of the reduction in property tax. So it's a good thing for the county residents, just not so good for the highway department. So the next thing that they did, they did find a little bit more money for gas tax. So we are going to get a little bit of an increase in the gas tax allotment that we get. The next thing is the prairie dog money. They did change that formula to a certain extent, so we are going to get... And they did divide it into two different pots of money. The first pot of money is the direct money that we'll get, comes right to Burley County. We won't get that money until the pots fill. That should be sometime next year. We don't know exactly, but sometime next year. In addition to that, they did, they set up some grants that were eligible to get, possibly to get. And the same goes kind of with the flex fund. They had the flex fund, a particular pot. We weren't anticipating any money, but they do have direct allocation out of that particular pot of money. So we are going to get about 3.2 million for that. So as it sits kind of right now, our anticipation of what's going to come to us, we're going to be down about 867,000. So however, we have these grants that we could possibly get. So at this point, and they are doing the same grant application formula, form, for both the prairie dog and the flex fund. So the process will be very similar and stuff, what they're going to go through. We put together four projects on this, that we're asking county board support for, that kind of meet the criteria that they were looking for. And those are kind of criteria, does these projects connect certain points together, different things like that. One of the things, these grants are 100%, so to answer your question, 1.75, that'd be 100% is what we're looking for that. Now, one of the things that helps improve your ability to get the grant is if you come in and say, oh, we're going to do this as a 50-50 grant. Say we use local property tax for 50% of it, and 50% of it is a grant. So we may want to do with that kind of thing. As we get closer to filling out these applications, they're not doing until the end of September. As we get closer to filling out these applications, they're not due until the end of September, I recommended that I work with Commissioner Schwab, and we kind of talk about what money we actually really have to work with. And maybe one of these projects will want to do something where we say, oh, this is gonna be a 50-50 one. So the four projects that we were looking at is basically a micro-surfacing on 71st and Centennial, that loop basically there. The paving of 66th Street and 57th Street. These are roads that we constructed not that long ago. Micro-surfacing of Moffett Road from 83 all the way over to 1804. And then a micro-surfacing of 80th from Apple Creek Road up to 71st. And each one of these projects may be divided up a little bit into stages so that we send a better chance of receiving some funds. Because as you can see, the dollar figures associated with that are quite substantial in each one of those particular cases. So as I mentioned, they're gonna have a scoring system that they've kind of developed already. We've had some information received from the DOT on that. We're in the process of just putting those grants together at this time. I would, there's a proposed resolution in your packet. I recommend support, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Bakken.
Marcus, on projects like the first one, for the micro-surface of 71st Avenue and Centennial Road, does that connect up to the city limits, the city boundaries at some point? And what are their plans? Because it's a little silly to do a project if then it's not finished because it just crosses the line into the city. So what does that scenario look like?
In that particular situation, we go from city limits basically over to 83. So on 83, the DOT's limit, and it's hard stop right there. The city limit is a little bit different. At this point, their particular.
Is there a discussion with as far as making sure that project goes all the way through?
We haven't had any in-depth discussions on what they would like to do beyond that. Their portion isn't too bad because they've redone it since we did, redid ours before.
Okay.
Yeah, in concrete. So it's not gonna be as big a deal there as far as this changeover, so.
I just wanna make sure as these projects come up, that we're not creating a scenario where we've got a road section that ends, and it comes up to the corporate limits of City of Bismarck. And then what does that look like from a transportation perspective?
You bet.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Move to approve?
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes, motion carries. Marcus, before you take off.
Yep.
Do we have any anticipated grant requests under the unorganized townships?
At this point, we haven't decided to put any together. We're still looking at that a little bit. Like I said, they have real strict criteria on what will be funded. And so we want to be able to pick a project that helps meet their criteria. So right now, we're still looking through those details.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Next, HR Director Binder, Buildings and Grounds Department discussion. Before we get started on that, I wanna make sure that the commission knows about something we became aware of recently. As of the end of last week, we found out that we've been losing a lot of water at the Providence Building, and we didn't, we didn't know anything about it. Nobody brought it to my attention, but apparently this problem started. We get daily notifications and emails during the work week from the City of Bismarck concerning our water usage. And they were notifying us of a water loss started in May of 2024 and ended in October of 2024. And we got daily notices about this, but nobody informed us. And then it quit for the winter period, and then it started up again in May of 2025. And it's been, it was continuing up until today. And so we were losing approximately 70 gallons of water per hour, 24 hours a day, seven days a week for that length of time. And I did a little bit of math on that, and just for, just for general numbers in this amount of time, that was approximately 500,000 gallons of water. And so I did a little quick math based on the average water use at my house and the amount of water that was wasted at the Providence Building was enough to feed my house for 148 years. Give you an idea of how much water we're talking about. But anyway, I brought it to the attention of the maintenance staff, and that's, that's the reason I want to bring this up because we did a letter of thanks to some staff that put in some additional work. But Dean Van Leet from our maintenance staff went up there and looked at it today because we were going to have a technician from one of the contractors on the Providence remodel go up and look at it tomorrow morning. And instead, Dean went up there today and took a look, and in short order, he found the problem. There was a bunch of these little regulator discs that were missing out of the water cooling tower that were allowing the thing to malfunction and blow water out onto the roof. And so when I was up there the other day, I could see that, you know, it was blowing the water out, and it was following this trench right on down and running right straight down the drain. And apparently, everybody was of the impression it's always been that way, so there's nothing wrong. Well, they found like seven of these things that had been, somehow they ended up in the sump of the machine or whatever, and somebody physically collected them up and set them off to the side. And so they were sitting there. But it was Dean that troubleshoot that problem and resolved that. And the City of Bismarck has this water analytic problem. So we should be able to see a noted, notable improvement in the water consumption at the Providence Building simply due to the efforts of Dean. And I want to make sure that he gets a thank you for that. So go ahead, Pam.
Okay, Chairman Bitner and Commissioners, I did put together the agenda items for the Buildings and Grounds Department. We do have a vacancy in our Facilities Director position, and I do need your approval to post that position again. But what I'm suggesting is because we already have the Providence remodel and Burleigh East underway, that we post for both the Facilities Director and the Facilities Manager position to see what we can get. Kind of what we did with the Finance Director, to see which one we could get, which one would make sense. And I'm just wanting approval if you want to post both and see what we get, or post one or the other.
I would move to post both, as you recommend.
Yeah, I would concur with that, folks. Because it depends on who applies and what their qualifications are, so. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, the second item I have is the memo. We have two senior staff in the Buildings and Grounds Department. One is Dean, the other is Mike. Dean has been here since 2016, Mike's been here since 1998. And they have, neither one wants to do the Facilities Manager or Director position, but they have stepped up when Kevin retired. They were continuing to step up while Bob Hook was here, and now they're stepping up again. We did not pay them anything extra the first time. So I am suggesting that we do pay them a stipend by adjusting their pay for the interim, and then three months after the new facilities person is hired, just because they are starting, they have to train that person. And what's going on as well is both Mike and Dean have job shadowers because we have Shane and Nathan that are new, and they're learning the ropes. So each one has to take one of those, and they have a job shadow, and they're trying to do their position and part of the Facilities Director position the best they can.
Commissioner Bakken.
And the trigger for that going back would be the hiring of either one of those future positions, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the temporary pay variances. Any further discussion?
Yes.
And I do support that. Commissioner Bakken?
Yeah, absolutely. Those two individuals have filled a lot of holes and worked through a lot of situations. And their diligence is saving Burleigh County money by their extra effort. So absolutely, I would be in favor of this.
I can add to that because today, I also called on Dean and Mike to investigate a situation in the courthouse. And they got right on it and went over there and got back to me right away. While I was outside looking at some projects that they were in the middle of, Donna from Court Administrator came over and was asking me about the status of these plumbing and toilet replacements in the courthouse that apparently had fell through the cracks. And so the decision was to go ahead and contact the contractor that was involved and have them schedule a Wednesday start on that project. And Dean and Mike ran over to the courthouse and verified where the water shut-off valves and all that stuff is for the project. And Mary Singer sent out an email to all the staff relative to that building, and we're notifying them that there may be a water shut-off for at least half the day, possibly more if they run into troubles, starting on Wednesday. So there was certainly extra effort, and both of these guys have stepped up and done anything that I've asked in addition during this period. And I want you to know, I appreciate that. So any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes, motion carries.
And the third thing I have is I'm requesting a vacation annual leave variance for Mike Kruckenberg. He has been here since 1998, so he is earning a good share of annual leave. And he understands that he's probably not gonna be able to take that this year because we won't have a Facilities Director. And it's taking both Dean and Mike to get the jobs done. So I would ask for a variance for Mike to be able to carry that over for six months. And if he doesn't use it in six months, he loses it. But we gotta give him a chance.
Commissioner Bakken.
How's Dean's status? Is he okay with where he's at?
Dean is okay, yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes, motion carries.
I just have one more comment. I'd like to thank James, Shane, and Nathan as well. There are other three members of the Buildings and Grounds Department. They are newer, but they're still working very hard.
Thank you.
Just noted. Commissioner Bakken. HR, I was over there today. It's a little humid down in the HR workspace. Is that better now?
It is better. I, we do have a dehumidifier that we used at the Providence Building, so that's working.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, County Finance Director and our Treasurer Jacobs, Budget Amendment for Auditor Treasurer Office. Welcome, Lee.
Good evening, Chair Bitner and Commission. So this, this item has made its return multiple times. The specifics of the amendment, as we wrote it, was to move the auditor and the elections coordinator out to their own budget along with an estimate of, you know, their share of the other items, like education and training. So that was my understanding initially, was that the admin assistant was going to be in the treasurer's side of the office. So that, but that did not come through in the actual split of the offices. But I now see item number 14 as a discussion on sort of this situation. Do we want to wait to discuss the budget amendment until that time?
14.
14B, Temporary Transfer of Employees to Help with Treasury Duties?
Oh. Yeah, well, we can discuss that now. I mean, if you, if you think it's better to put it under 14B, is that what?
Well, what I'm saying is the budget amendment, as it's written, still has just the election coordinator and the auditor off on their own budget. So that would leave an employee who currently reports to the auditor under the treasurer's budget. But if that's gonna change with 14B, which I don't know, I wasn't part of the.
We'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and move it then, if there's any, we'll move it, take it back up under 14B.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, item number 11. Just for clarification, this is information that was presented by Finance Director Jacobs. Not necessarily under Commissioner Munson, I was giving him some grief that he was in the minority on the vote on that thing, and it appeared that he was looking to reconsider something that is not up for reconsideration. So he told me that there was some new information from Lee. And Lee, if you want to present that new information, I guess this would be the point. But it's not a reconsideration.
Chair Bitner and Commissioners, I did get some new information on Friday. I received a call from the, our bond guys, as I call them. And they had a, sort of a new quote for me. Apparently, what happened is the original conversation, I had asked them to prepare a quote for five years at 10.5 million and 20 years at 16.5 million for the Providence renovation. And so then when I received the information back from them, they brought it to you, I think I had 4% for the five-year and 5.7% for the 20-year. What I learned on Friday was that they had gotten one quote and had used different timeframes in that quote as a proxy. So for example, the five-year quote was the first five years of the 20-year bond. And the 20-year quote was the average rate on the, or the effective rate on the 20-year bond. And so this is, this whole conversation was happening pretty rapidly the last couple of weeks. And so since I was last here, they had gone and gotten a proper five-year quote, which again, that was, that was what I thought we were dealing with. But I learned it was not. So they went and got a five-year quote, and it came back at a much lower rate, which makes sense because you're tying up your money for a shorter length. But the rate was between 3.25 and 3.4 for a five-year bond. And he grabbed a quote for $8 million at five years, callable in three. The payment was, I believe, 1.7 million. But really, the rate was what I was trying to highlight in the email that I sent out, was that with a rate of 3.25 to 3.4, it's, it's lower than the 4%. And it actually puts us below the average, or the, below the five-year treasury rate, which is because we're, we're seeking a non-taxable, excuse me, issue. And so treasuries are taxable, and so the rate's a little bit higher. But that was the information I was, the new information that I received.
Mr. Chair. Okay. Commissioner Munson.
So the other part that is in your packet, when we approved the $17 million of spending in reserve funds to pay for the remodel, Lee had put together a little chart for us to let us know that our balance after that will be under 10 million, which is then also under our 25% minimum reserve. So that's an education, or at least a knowledge for you guys that we are below our minimum, once we spend the money for the project.
Commissioner Bakken.
So Lee, being that this project is gonna be drug out over two years, do you have an estimate of what the replacement of that reserve fund would be over the course of that two years as money's getting spent out for the project?
Excuse me, so as of right now, we've got, I think we'll replace, just to answer your question, we'll probably replace maybe a million this year. As we finish the year, we'll probably add a million. Next year, possibly another million. We do have 9 million in excess, half-cent sales tax that I sort of put out to the side. That is technically reserves, but it had, there's been some different discussions about what to do with it, you know, in the past year or so. I don't think it's risen to the level of firmly committing it or, you know, transferring it out of the general fund. But yeah, I think we'll maybe add perhaps 2 million. One of the.
So do we have the resources to stay above that threshold for that 25%?
I think if you set aside the 9 million, which is what I did in the, in the packet, we'll be close to 25%. The 9 million, like I said, is technically reserves. It's just that, the reason I set it to the side is there'd been some conversation about. It's just that reason I set it to the side is there'd been some conversation about using it for other, you know, purposes, tax relief and stuff like that. But nothing has been like voted on.
Thank you, Lee. Okay. But, but as Lee said, just in the next year of interest income, before we start making payments to contractors, we should be able to earn enough interest to get ourselves above the twenty-five percent.
Above the twenty-five.
Yep.
I don't, I don't see that as a problem at this point.
Nope.
Okay, thanks, Lee.
But again.
Mr. Chairman.
The way we set this up though, too, it's still, we have that flexibility. If needed, we can go out and bond.
Yeah.
So that, that, that was the one thing that we did with the vote, was make sure that we do have contingencies, so there's options if we need to be nimble because something comes up.
Yeah. It's, Burley County isn't such a good position. Commissioner Woodcox.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. On this one sheet that we've got that says balances of January one, twenty twenty-five or twenty point three million, there's nothing referring the ARPA funds that we have set aside for this.
Those are, that, that's true. I don't think I captioned it as such. Those are in the capital projects.
Oh, okay, there you go. That's worth that. And the, and the other we're referring to is at the bottom, it says excess half-cent sales tax at eight point nine million. That's, we haven't made a commitment on how we're going to use that at all, right?
I don't recall a vote.
I don't think we have either.
No.
So that is available. If we were to move that into the general fund, it would go onto the reserves, correct?
Yeah, that's technically in your reserves as we speak.
Well, if we do that, there's no reason, we'll never get below that twenty-five percent.
That's, that's the point, yeah. Okay, thanks, Lee. Commissioner Bakken, ETA discussion.
Yeah, I wanted to have an opportunity, just a little bit of feedback for the discussion that we had with the joint commissions of both City of Bismarck and Burley County. I want to thank everybody that was able to attend that. I think from a, an introductory perspective and just from a presenting information, I think it was very beneficial to get that information. I'd like a little feedback from the rest of the commission, your thoughts. We had a lot of residents that did speak up, and I'm looking forward to hearing from more that have issues out in the ETA. You know, one of the things we've been working on, got addressed, and City Commissioner Conley's here as well. One of the things that is going to change for ETA residents is the thirty-two-hundred square feet constraint. So it, it's a good step in the right direction, but it's just the first step. So any input from commissioners that, I, I would love to hear what your take on that first meeting was?
Good question. I definitely have some input for you. You probably received some pictures today in your email from, from the county engineer regarding water drainage issues within the city. That's right down on Airway Avenue. It just so happened that I noticed that right after the meeting because I was going to the airport to pick my wife up. She was flying in from a short vacation without me, which was great for both of us. And, um.
You just said that on a recording.
I know.
She's going to use that against you forever.
Yeah, I'm, I'm taking some liberties with that, just for, just for humor's sake, you know? But anyway, I noticed that there was drainage problems right within the city limits that are real similar to the problems that we were talking about that got us to that five million, five hundred and ninety thousand dollars' worth of estimated work that we did. So my biggest comment would be that question that I asked, and I guess it was also quoted in the newspaper, that's a question that I, I want an answer. Are you going to make a lump sum payment or, and I'll add a word, or you want to make payments with interest? Because that's, that's the question. Because until we get to the resolution of the, the financial impact that this ETA between the City of Bismarck has on, on, on us and the, in the county, the reason that's a really big deal is because as we go through budgets, and everybody knows, we talk about projects and where we're putting money, what bridges, what culverts, what roads are we working on, then all of a sudden, we throw in this stray thing that nobody had a plan for, a drainage problem in a subdivision that's resulting in flooding of basements and whatnot. Well, how are we funding that? Well, we're taking that out of either reserves or taking away from other planned projects and things that don't get done. And those are tax dollars that come from all of the taxpayers in Burley County. And so just to say that, well, that was something in the past, and like the mayor made a comment that, you know, the city residents pay county taxes. What I'm saying is that this current thing is absolutely wasting taxpayer dollars, especially city residents who have no, no idea that it's costing them all of these millions to do these repairs. So that was, that was a real important thing. And with regard to a step in the right direction at this point, until we resolve this financial responsibility, I think the City of Bismarck needs to get back to the city limits and do their job, and we'll do our job out in the county. I mentioned during that meeting that I made a call to the city concerning metal, stuff that is blowing around from one, one particular site out here by the rural, rural fire department. And none of that has been secured yet. So the next storm can just pick that up and hurl it around the county wherever it's going to end up. And I work with that kind of material. And I can tell you, gentlemen, that's like flying razor blades. You know, this, this sheet metal stuff that we use on buildings, we secure that stuff every day on a job site so that nothing can blow around in case a storm blows up overnight. Now we've got that stuff literally laying around out in the open, just free to blow in the wind. And I can't understand for the life of me why that hasn't been addressed, but that's under their jurisdictioncy. And, and those are the kind of things that I'm concerned about myself. Commissioners, you're welcome to take over.
Mr. Chair. From the meeting, we were talking about having another opportunity for residents to come in and speak like at this meeting. Is that something still that we're planning on doing? Absolutely. I mean, we've got the public comment and those that want to speak on the ETA issues. Okay. I wasn't sure if we were inviting them or very specific, or just asked them to come for public. I will invite people to come and speak at all times. Perfect. It's, I want to hear from people who have concerns with the ETA so that we can bring that up to other portions of the meeting, so. Great.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Has any action been done on the working group that we're going to be forming?
Not to the best of my knowledge on our side yet, but the City Commissioner, Mike Conley, is here, I believe. Mike, if you've got an opportunity to, if you have any insight on where things are at on the city side? I've been out of town, so I've, I've got a meeting with the city administrator later this week, but if you have any input or any of your discussions, I'd love to hear that.
Yeah, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I, I think we all left the meeting a little bit, we had some consensus on guidance on where we're going to go, but the, there was nothing formally written down, so we were at a little bit of an impasse. I did talk with Commissioner Bakken a little bit this morning and said that our first city commission coming out of the gate, we didn't have a designated item on our agenda for a public comment period. So to your comments, Commissioner Munson, I did make a call out to our assistant city administrator today and said for the next meeting, next week, to have a designated space or mention. So we have that highlighted, that people are addressing it, it's earmarked rather than the public comment. Now, what they come up with on the agenda, I've learned through experiences and always as, uh, other people sometimes have insight on it differently. So I'm hoping that it's designated. We'll see what happens.
Well, Commissioner Conley to that, and to your question, Commissioner Munson, was, it was my understanding that we were having it on ours, which we put it on here, and that the city was going to have it on theirs, and it was kind of going to be an ongoing thing, so.
Yep, and that's why I made that call out this morning.
Much appreciated.
And they said they're going to work on it, so. And I think by having these discussions back and forth, we can hopefully benefit the citizens to make sure that we're all keeping each other accountable. One thing of importance that I would add to it on an educational basis, and I'll bring it up at the meeting next week. When I moved from the table here on the question that they said that they weren't going to answer, had a meeting internally with staff and another constituent, and we sat down, and I was told that we weren't going to talk about certain assessment charges one way or another. That does have a long history on different things because that particular practice would be employed whether the ETA conversation existed or not. And I was going based on my own educational background and looking up things from the nineteen seventy-five and seventy-seven legislative decisions. It was interesting in that meeting, when city staff got up, they started talking about that it's been a state discussion since nineteen twenty-nine. So to kind of turn the page off that little hardship to where they didn't want to answer, it's been in discussion for so long, to bring it back to where it's totally an ETA conversation right now, is the look-back, abeyance taxes in most regards no longer are a thing at present unless a commission changes the rules at a later date. In twenty eighteen, with the water utility rate changes are, it's called a utility capital charge. And for residential lots, there's a set amount of forty-seven hundred dollars currently. For commercial, it's twenty-four thousand, which is a good answer in some respects because when we compare it to, say, the Martin House that was south of Burley, that was nearly a sixty thousand dollar special assessment. So to know it's lower for some of those, that's probably going to help with the discussions going forward. I don't know why they couldn't have come up and educated. Hopefully, our, our next joint meeting, they can talk about that because it was a pretty simple discussion. There are six areas, I believe, that do have an abeyance amount, but it's solely based on water resource district projects that would be assessed. And that's a little bit of a different conversation. Like it's a lot into the weeds for most people.
And the assessment side is just one of many facets to the ETA that we're trying to get through and trying to address. So I, and just, I'm still a little befuddled by that because from a transparency perspective, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to not talk about that. So that's something I look forward to having further conversations with, but.
Right. So as far as the working group and things, it's, I think it takes, because outside of the noticed ten-person group or each individual five-person group, we have to be cognizant of open meeting law. So it would be, who are you, I would say, who would you designate one or two to make those calls? And let's make sure that we keep our gas on this discussion because we don't want to lose another decade or so. We need to take care of it now.
Yeah, and I should know more after my conversation with the city administrator Tamanik later this week, so as far as where we're at on getting those working groups together.
Yeah.
Give me brief.
Yeah.
And Rural Water is going to be, somebody that is talking with Rural Water and the boards and stuff, they're going to send me some information that plays into this conversation too. So not going to share anything within that because I don't understand the parameters of it enough yet.
Okay, thanks, Lee. Commissioner Schwab.
I, gonna be kind of honest, I really didn't like that last meeting. Nobody here, at least me, was contacted. We wanted to put something on the agenda. There was no supporting documents in some of the stuff they talked about. So they take the agenda and line parakeet cages or what? I'd never seen such a poorly structured meeting. This is what they want to talk about, and they never asked us what we want to talk about. I'm not going to put up with that.
I, I did have the conversation with Mitch, and that was more of an educational perspective because where it started with me is I actually heard a commissioner that, on the first vote, when they did not move forward, Commissioner Conley, your motion to have the discussion. And there was a lot of misinformation that was there, and, and I heard a commissioner say that, well, anybody can opt out of it, what's the problem? And we all know that that is not the case. And if we were to opt out of it, then it defaults back to the four-mile, and people are further burdened. So we do have somewhat of a working relationship with the City of Bismarck in certain areas that restricts it down to the two-mile, but there's a lot of work we can still do on that. So the first meeting was more the informational piece. Moving forward, we need to hear from residents. So i- if you're a resident in the ETA, potentially a resident in the ETA as the City of Bismarck grows, because we know it will, then we want to hear about your concerns so we can address some of those things. We all, as commissioners, have dealt with it long enough that we know what our concerns are. And trying to work with city staff and the City of Bismarck's elected officials to have a better working relationship, that, that's the goal. And if we can mitigate the ETA or eliminate the ETA, county staff can manage it, whatever that looks like, it's going to be a step in the right direction.
Sure. Well, I have full confidence in the county being able to manage anything that needs to be managed. So I want to add to the auditor, we'll keep the ETA discussion on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll probably continue that moving forward.
Yeah, and I would invite residents that want to come and speak, please do. That's what we have the public comment for.
I guess, I guess I could ask anybody in the, anybody in the room, want to throw anything in on the ETA at this point, or wait? While he's coming up, Marcus, did you share?
By the way, Commissioner Conley, thank you.
That email regarding a development. There was, there was a, I had gotten an email from Casey that talked about a letter to the city planning with some concerns about a proposed development. I think it was black. Yeah. Did you share that? The only question, did you share that email with all of the commissioners or just me? Okay, I'd like for you to also provide that email to the rest of the commissioners because there was items in there. In the past, the city has said, well, we, we need to be out there doing that because we got to make sure that roads line up and, you know, things are, things are done properly. Well, in this, in this subdivision that they're talking about, the county engineering staff is real concerned that the city is looking at allowing something where the, the roads on the opposite side of the streets don't line up. And, and I know this to be a fact because just in the mile or less than a mile north from my place up to Highway ten, there's, right north of me, there's two streets that don't line up with each other, and they're different names. And then right up the road, there's, there's one that is lining up, but they have a different name on each side of the street, which is like, who, 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 who thought that was a good idea? And so those are the kind of things that.
Yeah, we'll make sure that all the commissioners get that letter that we put together, so.
Okay.
We'll see about tomorrow. Just for those at home that are listening, the reason that's important is we supply rural fire, we supply rural law enforcement, and situations like that where you've got the same road and two different names, that's confusing. And that is time. And time is the biggest detriment to public safety. So things like that should not take place. Yeah, in addition to that, from a highway safety point of view, when you're having vehicles come out at different points, that just creates too many places where people have to look and see and what's going on. And, and when you get elderly drivers or young drivers who don't understand the, the way things work, you create a situation where we increase the accidents at those intersections. And we just want to eliminate as many of those as we can.
Right, so thank you.
So I'll be real quick with it. I think it's great you guys are encouraging people to speak at the city level, but I think a lot of us that have been following the ETA for a while understand where city representation is with this. I said at your joint meeting, I'm going to say it again, we've kind of been given the bird by the city. They had an opportunity to lead this. It was first brought to them. It was a three to two vote of no. Part of the problem is I think you guys are kind of beating your heads up against the wall because they just don't understand. You guys are talking to people that have not been around long enough to understand what you're telling them. I'm going to be quite frank at the joint meeting, I mean, most of us residents that have been following around long enough understood what you were saying, and, and the mayor couldn't wrap his head around it. Why encourage residents to come talk to people that have no idea what they're talking about? I would like to see another joint meeting held by both commissions. Because right now, as an ETA resident, I feel you guys are about my only representation. And if I had to say, I would rather be a county resident, do away with the ETA. And if I had to say, I would rather be a county resident, do away with the ETA and let us be county residents. Um, because as I said at the joint meeting, I can get ahold of any one of you at any time. I can't say that from a city level. And quite frankly, I don't think city staff know what they're doing either with the ETA. So let's just quit encouraging people to come talk to the city because they're not going to get anywhere. Several of us have been doing it for quite a while and we just get ran in circles. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, you want to move on? Got enough info there for at least for the next?
Again, anybody who wants to reach out to me, uh, shoot me an email, um, because our next discussion is going to be at the joint city-county subcommittee, um, and then we'll take next step forward. I'm hoping people are going to speak to the city at their, uh, next meeting. Again, this forum is always open. Uh, please reach out to any of us commissioners and commissioners, if you've got anything, contact me that you want me to bring forward as well. Uh, I think we got a, a framework of where we're going and what we need to discuss, but it, like I said, it's just baby steps at this point.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Whitaker.
When you talk about a working group, that was one of the things that came out of that joint meeting, but, uh, we already have a, uh, commissioner, we already have a working group where we have two city and two county commissions that meet regularly and we get a notice saying, nothing on the agenda, meeting counseled, meeting canceled. I've seen two or three of those, so isn't the ETA something that this working group could tackle?
I think that's where it is.
Yeah, that's where it is right now, so.
Okay.
And that's going to be ongoing on that agenda also, so.
Okay, great.
But again, I need input. I mean, I, I know where I stand on some ETA issues. I know the residents I've talked to and what they're dealing with. Uh, I'm fairly confident I got a pretty good grasp on Commissioner Bitner's, uh, because those are some longstanding discussions him and I have had both when I was on the city side. Um, so I've got a pretty good idea of him, but as far as other commissioners, please send me your input.
Okay. Appreciate that. Next item is, uh, Commissioner Woodcox, Provident Mural Discussion and Budget Amendment, County Involvement. Commissioner Woodcox.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, last meeting we had, we, I mentioned the fact that this mural that we're looking at and working on is, is starting to roll, but we've, uh, asked to have the five thousand dollars dedicated from the, from the, uh, Community Involvement Fund. Well, it turns out some of that money had already been spent, which I didn't realize, so, uh, I would like to have a budget amendment to raise that. And this is on twenty twenty-five budget, not next year's, this is this year's. So we can make a budget amendment to move that five thousand dollars to seven, two thousand one hundred fifty more, which has already been spent to a total of eight thousand one hundred and fifty.
So moved.
Second for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to increase to eighty-one fifty.
I don't know that figure. If you add two thousand one hundred fifty to five, it's seventy-one fifty. But I think, I think the, the next year's budget was going to be six thousand dollars, so. Cause we added a thousand onto the five thousand that we had previously. Any questions, concerns?
Chair.
Commissioner Bakken.
Um, so Commissioner Woodcox, uh, as far as other funding sources, have you guys been able to identify some of those as far as state heritage center? Um, where are you looking at getting other money coming in for this project?
We are working on that right now. Uh, they haven't got any results yet. There's grants and things you have to apply for and we're doing that, so. We won't know that until, in the meantime, that's what this five thousand dollars is supposed to be for is incidental in, in expenses that they might have. And, uh, I don't anticipate spend, we might spend it all, we might not, but anyway, want it available in case we need to do something. Cause there's fees that have to go with these applications and things, but we're working on it. Uh, it'll, it'll be, you'd be surprised how much is involved with it, so, because there's four or five groups that are involved and.
Cause I know there's a lot of interest, uh, from the state level and, and so it just takes time to get through.
Yes, it does.
The process, okay.
Yep.
Call the rule.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Concerning that five thousand dollars, uh, working with Lee, is Lee, is he still here? Uh, he felt the easiest way to handle that rather than the, the, uh, Fort Lincoln Foundation, it, Dr. Fort Lincoln Foundation. It's a regional something. Anyway, for them to write a check out of their account, it would not be, uh, appropriate. So we've decided that Lee recommended that we just write them a check for five thousand dollars and then they keep track, track of all the expenses and, and contact me with anything that's significant and I'll, I'll monitor the receipts so that everything is taken care of.
Can you contact Harrison diversion? Is this one of the?
It's on the agenda, I think. It's one of those things where you, you get the agenda and say, oh, no, no meeting today, so. I'd love to.
That's cute. Okay. Uh, next item is under me, um, which I really don't have much to say about, there's a redistribution of auditor, treasurer and tax equalization department portfolios. Um, this has to do with a conversation that you and I had, Commissioner Munson, that, um, with, with the auditor and the treasurer, um, and tax equalization and the finance director. I'm willing to retain the treasurer and the finance director and the tax equalization. Um, Commissioner Bakken has, has offered to just assume the, the balance of the auditor position. And, um, if, if the commission concurs, I don't think that a motion is needed, but we could, um, to do that. So we're going to change the.
I would concur.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing everybody nod their heads, so that's what we're going to do. Thanks for stepping up and doing that. Okay, and then, uh, there was temporary transfer of employees to help with treasurer duties. Um, this is where Lee wanted to put in a little bit more information. Uh, Lee? Basically what we've talked about is, um, uh, kind of making some adjustments to who's doing what.
Well, as, as I said, I, my understanding a, a month ago or six weeks ago, whatever it was, was that we would, we would be moving, um, the elections coordinator and the auditor out and then as their own, uh, department and then the balance of the staff would be the treasurer department. Uh, I think what actually got voted on was that the, um, the elections coordinator, the admin assistant and the auditor are on their, in their own department. That's kind of where I left, left off. I've had a couple of conversations with, uh, the HR director. Um, and, you know, there's certainly, since the office was combined historically, there's some duties that cross lines. I don't really see why they couldn't be done in any permutation of, you know, the department. Um, but the actual budget that's in the packet is just the elections coordinator and the auditor. And so if we're, and I wasn't really at all part of the discussions on this item four B, um, but if the plan is to move the admin assistant over to the treasurer, then the budget in the packet would be, would be adequate, uh, or the budget amendment rather, with the understanding that it should be a, a, um, adjusted to the most recent pay period because it's like a month old. Um, but if the plan is to leave it as is, then we'll have to come back with a, a different budget amendment next meeting. Does that make sense?
Okay, I think Pam wants to add to that.
No.
I can put some light on the subject. Poorly, we kind of left him hanging there. Um, Chairman Bitner, commissioners, within that department, when we combo, when we did the combination, um, the administrative assistant to that real estate position is kind of the hybrid. It always was the hybrid because there wasn't enough there to just be on the treasurer's side of it. So this position was kind of treasurer and auditor's position. The rest of them fall pretty clear, either auditor or treasurer, but this position was a combination of both. So on Commissioner Bakken's, um, be- behest today, it's been a Monday, sorry. Um, I did put together these job descriptions to kind of show you that position and it's actually the third one from the back, so it's the third page. And depending on the election year, that administrative assistant to real estate position, if it's an election year, it's, that position is going to be dedicated more towards the elections. On non-election years, this position does more on the treasurer's side. This position is always there to take payments, um, because the busy time for that office was always, um, December through March or April, when payments, tax payments are due.
Okay.
So that's the explanation behind it.
Right. Um, so you have a suggested motion on what?
No.
What you want to do? Are we going to review this or Commissioner Bakken?
Just for clarification purposes, um, Auditor Spontkowski, do you have a, kind of a breakdown of what your needs are for your office and kind of a timeframe of, of what that looks like? Cause I know this position functions as a hybrid when your busy time is, what's your calendar for, uh, election services and, and performing those duties? Can you give us a little overview on that, please?
Yes, so, uh, Chairman Commissioners, Commissioner Bakken, um, so as far as non-election years, uh, what that specific position does, the, the, uh, real estate, uh, admin assistant, real estate, uh, as far as on the auditor's side of things, the main things that that position does is the delinquent taxes, the, uh, the, the tax sale, the notices for that. That's kind of one of the, at least one of the bigger things that that position does for the auditor's side. Now that hasn't been exactly hashed out yet, who's going to be doing those functions, either myself or the treasurer. Um, but that's kind of as far as like the century code portion of the auditors. That's one of the bigger things that they do in non-election years. Now, when it comes to election years, uh, really.
Cause we know it's all hands on deck when it's election time.
Correct.
From a, a staffing perspective, what do you need for an election year? Not counting the all hands on deck, what, what do you need for dedicated staff?
That's kind of a loaded question.
It is. It's extremely.
Besides everybody.
Everybody's doing it, but what do you need?
So, so yeah, besides on, on election years, what I'm going to need is, is, uh, myself, my executive assistant. And then really in all reality, I'm okay with this position being a flex position. Between my, 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 my office and the treasurer's office, so long as his duties remain the same as they, as they currently are, this flex position will be sufficient for my office's needs, so long as I, uh, retain that executive assistant slash elections coordinator.
Okay, thank you.
Is that something that requires a motion to do or are we just?
Well, you need to make a motion if you want to transfer that position to the treasurer.
Yeah, that'll clear up the budget question.
And that'll clear up the budget.
Okay, commissioners, um, I think we'd entertain a motion to transfer that position to the treasurer.
I would make that motion as long as the duties remain the same as they're laid out.
Yeah, that's the understanding.
Yeah, so that's why Pam go through this today and make a little tweak to it, so, um, as per her recommendation, that would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, I'm not sure that cleared up all of that. I think we have an understanding.
But it, it's a flex position and, and as long as the duties migrate accordingly, as they're needed seasonally, then that is my motion.
Okay. Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman. And we want to make it clear, we're not adding any extra employees, right?
No.
Okay, because I've had questions about saying we're creating another job or we're not.
That's why this flex position exists is so that we don't have to add other employees.
Right.
They're, they go where they're needed, when they're needed.
It's a pretty good deal. Call the rule.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bitner.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Both Pam and Lee appreciate the input. WBI Energy Right of Entry Request.
Uh, so, uh, Chairman and Commissioners, we received this letter requesting, uh, permission to come onto our property. Uh, then the, the parcel is referred to in the letter, um, is Steckel boat ramp. Is, is where they're looking to go across. So, uh, basically what I need is, is your recommendation or your approval for, for them to be able to access the, our property, to survey across it and it looks like it's potentially to put a, a pipeline across it. Uh, but that would require your, your, uh, motion and then I have the original documents for signatures.
Motion approved.
Uh, second for discussion.
Commissioner Bakken.
Um, so depending on what they're looking at for the full expanse of this project, would that boat ramp require being closed at any point for a potential project?
Um, I have not received information regarding that particular detail.
Okay, because I, I would be very interested to see what that looks like and Commissioner Munson, if you've got any input on that.
I don't have any additional input. I mean, my motion is to allow them out to do the survey.
Right.
Not construction.
But there's a subsequent project.
There's potential, but until we see a map as to where they're actually proposing. I know it says fifty feet right away.
Right.
But until I know where that fifty feet is.
Well, there is a current utility easement there already and is, is this outside of that?
I do not know that.
Okay, well, that, I would approve this, but I, those are still questions we're going to have to ask in the future.
Correct.
So.
Good, call the rule.
I had a question. I just want to make sure that we get a yea or nay on this thing if they're going to put that pipeline right in the middle of our boat ramp and shut the boat ramp down for a season or two. We, we certainly don't want that to happen, so at some point, we're going to get some input as to where that thing goes.
Right, that's why this is.
Although they're looking to go through the right of way, so the right of way is not that big. And if that right of way down, right down the middle of our boat ramp, we're going to have some further discussions, I hope.
Right. Yeah, so the, I don't have an issue with the survey. That's where it stops. So we need to have conversation after that.
Okay, call the rule.
Commissioner Woodcox.
No.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
No.
Chairman Bitner.
No. Just because?
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I want to know because I want a little more clarification than just a letter.
I agree with you. I, I agree.
They can come and tell us what they're doing. We don't, this is the first time we've even seen that this is coming.
That's, that's essentially why I voted no on it. I'd like to see additional information to tell us what, what are we even surveying? I'm, I'm not opposed to pipelines and oil outside of CO2 pipelines. This would be, this would be oil.
They're here, aren't they? Aren't they here today?
Oil and gas and natural gas and all that, that fuels our lives, but.
Right.
Um, that's, that's not the point in my having any opposition to this particular ask. I would just like to know more information about where they're going, like, you know, before we, before, we might as well know that before we even start.
Right.
And I, and I think it would have been appropriate for a representative of that company to be here and doing the ask instead of our staff, but go ahead, Commissioner Schwab.
I agree because it isn't clear to me on the stuff they gave us, whether it's county right of way, state right of way or eminent domain right of way, so they need to get a representative up here.
Sure.
Or at least provide some better information.
You're right.
Give me a, give me a map of Steckel and say this is possibilities.
Something this important, you would think they'd send somebody up here.
Well, that's like I said.
You know, I think some of that information comes out with the survey.
Right.
So, uh, there's probably some things that they can't answer until they do the survey, so.
But I do think they could provide some information.
That's why I would be in favor of the survey, but not, you know.
Mr. Chairman.
If that stops there.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Do we know how much land we own there? Out of curiosity, I have no idea.
No, I actually don't know.
We could find out for you.
Good.
Okay, we'll learn more about that at the next meeting, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them.
Okay. Um, and if we can have a representative on the next, uh, or the information for the next, on the next agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay, we're down to other business. Commissioners, I, I had some thoughts on something that I, that I want you to consider. Back when we, um, approved the sales tax for property tax reduction, um, our goal was to reduce property taxes, the county portion of your property taxes. And I think that's an appropriate thing, well, the whole reason I suggested is because I think that's a great thing to do for the citizens of Burley County. But one of the things that's come to my attention that it's actually going to do is give a county property tax break to out-of-state mega corporations that profit handsomely off of Burley County citizens. And that was not my intentions to give a property tax break in Burley County to out-of-state corporations such as the Wally World or, or, um, any other thing of a similar kind of name or Fleet Farm or Target or. of the similar kind of name, or Fleet Farm, or Target, or, or any like that. And so, I, I just thought I'd mention that to you for consideration, I asked State's Attorney Lawyer to kind of look into some options on, on, on what we could maybe do with that, and if, I didn't intend for her to have any, any presentation available for this meeting, but I would like you to ask around and to think about it, because I was thinking maybe something like a, a modification to the Home Rule Charter that clarifies that's similar to the state's primary residence credit, you know, a county primary residence credit and a county business credit, not, it wasn't my intention to give some kind of windfall thing to these, these really high dollar property, properties around town. So, I just wanted to bring that up for discussion so that you guys could think about it, and then I'll, I'm sure I'll get additional information from State's Attorney, even though I didn't have a chance to check my emails, Julie, so I don't know if, if you sent, but.
I just sent a little blurb as to how that's done.
Okay. Okay. I was, I was, I was chasing my tail today, so I didn't have a chance to look at that. But I think for the future, we'd like to, you know, have some additional conversations on that, if you understand what I'm kind of getting at. Anything else for the good of Burley County? Commissioner Bakken?
First of all, is there a representative of Summit here?
They left.
Okay, all right, no. Marcus, are you still, could you come up here? I was wondering if you could walk me through the process, so residents out in the ETA or rural residents that are part of Bismarck Public School District, when they lay out their bus routes and their bus plans, do we have any conversations with them as far as where's a safe place for pickup, where is, what's not impeding traffic at certain congestion times? Are we part of that conversation at all?
Commissioners, over the 17 years I've been here, I think I've had one discussion in regards to bus stop locations, bus stop issues. Generally speaking, no, we have no input on, on that information.
Okay, and who is the contact with, with their busing?
Actually, I would go through the school district itself, I wouldn't deal with the bus company to begin with.
Right, right, but who is the contact for, for that? Is it Darren, or is it?
Yeah, Darren is usually the one I've talked to.
Okay.
So, that's who I would start with.
Conversation with him then, so.
Yeah.
Because I, I think residents bring up some great points when it comes to their kid's safety, and when, I, I'm a little remiss that they're not taking into consideration unlit roadways, no sidewalk roadways, and I understand it's rural busing and that it's a little different animal, but I've got some concerns with that as well, so that, I'll start there.
Yeah, and there's numerous things that we can do, some of them are low cost kind of alterations to the roadway and stuff like that, so definitely let me know how that discussion goes, because there are some things we can help.
And I might bring you in on that conversation as well, because, you know, if, if there's something we can do to facilitate it on our side, that is cost effective, that helps out the school district, helps out the, the kids, then we have to look at that, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcox.
I have the superintendent of schools portfolio, and I'll visit with Brad Dick, and I don't think they, he has any input into it, but I'll find out.
Okay.
Because Bismarck School District would be the one to handle theirs, but anything beyond the school district, I don't know, they even have bus service for that, they may have to get the kids themselves if they're not in the school district.
I've never, I've never seen a bus for any of the rural schools.
But I'll find out, if I learn anything.
But they're picking up kids for the, that live within the ETA for.
Oh, sure.
Their system, so it'd be interesting to see what that process is.
We have rural schools in Wilton and Sterling and Monocan, and so they're beyond the, the three mile or the two, what is it, two miles?
But I think what was brought up with more of the BPS.
They're more concerned about that.
What that looks like, so we'll start there, I guess, thank you.
And Chairman, if I may, I have one thing too. I just wanted to respond real quick to the one speaker who is putting you on notice that you're paying public employees to violate the US Constitution. I wasn't able to get it all pulled up while she was up there speaking, but I did want you to know that there is an 1884 US Supreme Court decision that says that that, the Amendment Five, which deals with grand jury indictments, does not apply to the states through the Fourteenth Amendment, and the North Dakota Constitution does talk about grand jury indictments, but also says the legislature can abolish the grand jury system, so you are not paying public servants to violate the law, we are in compliance with the law.
Thank you.
That's a relief. Like being within the law. Anybody else?
Was it Murray?
No. We're adjourned, thank you.